I know.
Good evening, welcome to the regular city council meeting Sunday, November 4th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Vaney.
Here.
Alderman Mahavet.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
I'm Mayor Ted.
Here. Please stand for the fudge. Fudge Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, is there any public comment from any one of the public? I see none, moving on to the consent agenda, is there any items for separate consideration by the council? Alderman Glad?
Pull A, please.
Just discuss and possibly change E and F, please.
And I'm going to pull item C. So E and F you want to pull as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve by B, C, D.
Not C.
No, not C.
B, D.
And G. Alderman Santi?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Glad?
Second.
Discussion? Alderman Vaney?
Um, yeah, regarding A, um, which I'm glad was pulled, I just want to say that I think it is our job as council members to support our staff and anyone in our community that's invested in growth, not to assault them like what was done at the end of our last meeting. I personally was embarrassed and offended and would ask that council really seriously consider the way we're conducting ourselves up here, especially in regards to how we're treating our staff. Also, after that assault, honestly, that should never have even been addressed at a special meeting, that particular issue was to be addressed at tonight's meeting, which was discussed at our previous council meeting, and I have to say Mr. Glad made a clear violation of the Open Meetings Act by bringing up something that was not on the agenda at a special meeting.
Attorney Carl.
Uh, well, I was asked during the last two weeks to look at the issue of whether you could discuss matters in, at a special meeting outside of the items that are on the special meeting, and it appears from the AG anyway, the Attorney General, that that's not appropriate in the frequently asked questions. The question is, can the public body take action on items that are not on agendas of regular meetings? And of course, they answer all that, which is the issue, but then it goes on in the last sentence and says, it's important to note that at a special or emergency meeting, unlike a regular meeting, a public body cannot even discuss items that did not appear on the agenda for the special meeting. So it's, uh, it is a violation of the act. I don't think anybody's going to go to jail for it, but it's something that everybody wants to note. It came up fast at the end of the meeting when we were adjourning, so I don't think, well, that's just context in which it was brought up.
Thank you. All right. And I'd just like to say, I mean, you know, I think we all consider us professionals, and I think a phone call and, um, could have gone in a better direction. You know, I, it was my, um, I gave Ross the okay to allow them to have the signs. Um, of course, I was going to mention that the last meeting with the meetings act, but, you know, I had okayed it until we came back to the following meeting, which was going to be today's meeting. So, um, I think our job is to work with all businesses, our job is not just to violate them and, uh, and so forth, so, um, especially a company like Lennar that has, you know, just like any other business, wants to help McHenry grow, so. With that said, uh, any other discussion on these items that are on the motion at this time? Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Vaney.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, the item, first item that was pulled is 5A, assign variance to one of our builders to allow advertising signs to be placed in the city's right-of-way for a period of one year. Any discussion on this item, Mayor Ted? Alderman Glad?
The reason why I pulled it is the fact that my reservations, number one, uh, we do have an ordinance from putting signs in our right-of-way, which only the council is supposed to be able to, um, give a variance for. Uh, number two is the fact that are we opening up the doors to other builders or anybody to start asking for signs? We do have one builder, and I don't remember the name right, man, that had come in, uh, that had, uh, was building down Veterans Parkway and asked for a sign out there off of the?
D R order.
Yeah, order, and, um, we gave him the sign, we supported it with a sign, um, which to prevent them to come back, uh, with directional signs as well. Jurstat builders years back used to do it, and we had changed the ordinance to eliminate that because not only were we getting them in the city of McHenry, but we were also getting them in areas around us, and I just think it sets a bad precedence, uh, as far as the fact that, uh, we have, uh, an ordinance that is on the books, and if we're going to give a variance on this, how do we say no to the next builder and the next builder and the next builder? And as well, uh, I mean, we have others out there that, if they plop signs in the right-of-way, I've been told that, uh, you know, it's okay as long as they're standing there next to them, so. Like I say, I mean, are we going to just take a giant step back as far as our sign ordinance, uh, as far as on the right-of-ways, and that's my readiness.
Any other comments, discussion items? No? All right. I'm looking for a motion on 5A as presented. Alderman Vaney?
Make that motion on 5A to grant a sign variance to one of our builders.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Mahavet?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Vaney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is, uh, 5, uh, C, which was pulled as a word of a bid for the installation of holiday lighting in Veterans Memorial Park to fast value lighting for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. We pulled this item because the budget was two thousand dollars difference, and then go ahead both.
Yeah, no, it was an oversight on my part, I just missed it, and I had, I had our budget down as nineteen five, our budget placeholder was seventeen five, and so we can, uh, David jump in and help me on this one, but I think we can approve this contingent upon bringing that budget amendment back to you. Uh, the good thing about this one is we did get two bids this year, we typically only had one for the last ten years, um, and so checking them both, I had some references for a new firm, um, they, everything seemed to check out.
Thank you, both. This discussion, Alderman Santi?
Do we, can we, can we, can we vote on this tonight as presented and then we come back with a budget amendment, or should we have it as one? Should, should we do the budget amendment?
You should do it because it's not on the agenda and it's a money item, so that's even more of a reason, but you can make this motion subject to?
Okay.
The budget amendment.
And so, that's what I will do, I'll make the, I'll make that motion, I'm, I'm sorry, there's still discussion for, I'll wait.
Alderman Glad?
I was just going to say that I don't have a problem with it, you know? And I can't remember the last time we were under seventeen thousand for, uh, for lighting still. When you look at the costs going up nineteen five, really isn't that bad of a, uh, a price, as long as we're still supporting, uh, lighting up Veterans Memorial Hearts, uh, I don't have a problem.
Any other discussion? Looking for a motion for 5C as presented, and, uh, you want to work that? Go ahead. Santi, you got it?
Well, I'll make the motion as presented, subject to, uh, approval of a budget amendment. Uh, next council meeting, correct?
Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet?
Yes.
Alderman Vaney?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, council. Uh, the next item that was pulled was 5E, that's the October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen city council, uh, meeting minutes, uh, discussion on this item, Alderman Schaefer?
Um, yeah, just the, um, I, I think the minutes should reflect who votes yea and who votes nay, and on page twenty-nine, thirty of our agenda, that's, it's not, it's not worded or tabulated that way.
What, was it a, um, paper?
No, that would be fine.
Oh, there's no?
There's nays, so the nays should be, the who votes nay should be noted, it normally always is, it's not, you need to record that that way. If you look at the bottom of page twenty-nine, there was one nay, and then if you look on page thirty, there was two nays on that motion, and it's, it, it's not. Do you guys see that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just, just the nays identified with no.
Well, obviously, if it's all gays, you don't need to know anything, but, but those need to be recorded, and it, I don't know if it's always been done that way, I don't think it has, but, and then on the next minutes, it's, it's done correctly, so, um, I don't know if there's any other previous minutes that might have that, I didn't notice that. The other thing on the next one, or, I guess we got to vote on that one first, sorry. That was E, right?
We do, we can have it together. Yeah, go ahead, if you want to discuss that this one.
On the other one, there, there was quite a bit of discussion during the, um, Mayor, during your presentation about, um, how we were going to report and, uh, see the transparency stuff that we discussed, and that's not in the minutes at all. So I, I just completely left out.
Okay, we make sure that's in there.
Okay. As long as those get added and changed, um, I'll make the motion to?
Let's go ahead and get those changed and then?
Approve these with those changes.
Okay.
I think it's, uh? Oh, I was looking, I was looking on, in the order that it was done, but maybe it's in there earlier. Thirty-two. What's different than my page thirty-two? That's interesting.
Oh, you weren't supposed to notice that.
Was there a new agenda, seriously? My thirty-two is still the stuff.
Maybe because?
Are you looking at the same minutes?
Yeah.
The special meeting minutes, right?
It's on page thirty-four in mine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Are we good on that, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve 5E and 5F.
With those changes, yes. I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet?
Yes.
Alderman Vaney?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion items, seven A, is Orchard Beach Road, uh, discussion, Director Strange, you may add.
Thank you, Mayor Ted. Um, so as everyone knows, uh, this item was the, this topic was discussed back August fifteenth, uh, just brought forward as a discussion item, um, and staff were given direction to research some of the, the background documents about the annexation of Riverside Hollow subdivision as it related to the Orchard Beach Road, so, uh, documents were gathered, a little background information put together in the supplement, um, documents we put together were the original plat, subdivision covenants, plat of annexation, the final plat of subdivision, annexation agreement, and annexation ordinance. We have Howie Commissioner Jim Condon here in attendance to discuss the issue as well, and at this point, the, the issue of whether or not this road is decided to maintain, s-still hangs largely on the definition of a highway in the Illinois statutes, uh, and staff are seeking direction as far as how we see whether or not we want to, uh, cooperate or work with the township on any sort of letter of intent.
Thank you, Troy. Jimmy, you want to go ahead and get us started here?
Uh, I think you all, everybody saw Troy's memorandum that he sent. There's a couple of things that I just wanted to add to that memorandum. The first one is his second item starts out section one, it talks about, um, the annexation agreement and portions of adjacent streets, roads, or highways, and one of the arguments earlier was that it's always been listed as a driveway. Well, if you look at the very first plat, the original plat, and I've got a copy of it here, there's another section to it that the area that's referred to of it as a driveway is actually five, about five lots further to the south from where the current road exists. So that's what's called the Orchard Beach Drive, okay? So I just pointed that as one thing that kind of indicates that the, the section where the road actually is at is actually a road. The second thing I wanted to point out was that when Vanderstap and surveying did the, did the, uh, the drainage easement for the storm sewer that runs from Kennedy's development down to the river, they actually labeled on their flat Orchard Beach Road. So it's another source that, again, was considered a road. You mentioned a highway is defined in the Illinois, uh, code specifically as a public way, and you point out that the residents actually had it labeled as private drive. I would say that it's been used as a public road ever since I've known it. People have been able to drive up and down, it is not a private drive, it's a public road, people drive up and down it regularly, not just the residents that live there. The last thing that I wanted to point out that we really didn't give much thought to previously is the sanitary sewer, the sanitary sewer services that have been installed. If it was the association's property, then why was the association not, uh, requested, how come a permit wasn't requested from the association when the sanitary sewer service was put in? They have never issued any permits or anything else for any improvements across that road since the time that Kennedy home has been put in. I assume that the city have, uh, actually, um, approved those permits for those sanitary sewer services, so I can only believe that if that's the case, that the city is assuming that, that they do actually have that right-of-way and they have the right to issue that permit. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying this is another point, another thing to consider. And the last thing I want to touch on is I'm sure one of the things is long-term maintenance of that road, I can tell you the, the, one of the big reasons why we are involved in it is because we plow the other portion of the beach, we are going to travel down this road, just like we do now, and turn around and go the other way. So the maintenance of it, the plowing, the trimming, have any brush or anything like that, we will continue to do that, similar to what we do with, uh, other, our IGA agreement with the city of McHenry for the different, uh, roads that we plow, in exchange for roads that you plow for us moving forward, so I think that majority of the maintenance will continue to, uh, be done by the city, by McHenry Township, because I don't think the city has any near-term plans to annex up Orchard Beach beyond where the Kennedy property is currently. So based on those things, we would hope that, again, you would consider, uh, participating in the joint effort to try to upgrade the south portion of Orchard Beach. Again, we would request that you contribute fifty thousand dollars, the association themselves are contributing, is it twenty-five thousand or twenty, twenty-five thousand? We have previously asked the, the county for a hundred thousand, uh, contribution, and then the township would make up the remainder, which I would believe would be fifty-five thousand. And if this comes in less than that, if there's any savings, uh, in other words, for instance, if the price came in and we were at forty-five thousand, we would still contribute the fifty-five thousand and reduce your portion, uh, your fifty thousand by whatever the difference is, just to try to help move it forward.
What did the county say?
We haven't been back to the county for over a year because we've been trying to move forward through the city. Initially, they were in favor of it, but I can't speak for them right now. As soon as we know what we're doing here, I'll be back there at the, uh, Transportation Committee, and I would hope that, uh, based on the joint efforts, that they would, they would like, they would move forward with it and do that.
Discussion, Alderman Glad?
Yeah, as far as the sewer connections, I can recall the first ones, uh, that we did over there, and the question was specifically asked, and they did get hold of the association at the time for permission to go underneath the road for that connection, so it isn't like we just went and did it.
Right.
So, I mean, just so that we are clear on that, and that's the fact that we've always gotten permission from the association across that, that driveway to connect the, uh, needed the sewers.
Any other comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Um, if we, if, moving forward with this, the, the one thing from the history standpoint that Mr. Condon pointed out, I would like to see, uh, either in the IGA or, or, or some type of written maintenance agreement for what he just described, so that when we're not here and he's not there, we know that, you know, they're going to maintain it and do the pruning and the plowing, just like has been stated. I, I, is that stated anywhere now, really, in writing, that you know?
Uh, just through our IGAs that we currently have.
Oh, okay.
And it's on an annual basis, actually, it doesn't have an end to it, it was executed last year, and I don't think we had an end date on it, it was, um, notifying the other party if you wanted to terminate that agreement, so I think it continues on. I know a lot of ours were like that last year, that we, uh, did last year, and I'd have to verify the cities, but I think that's what it was.
Yeah, if, if you two can verify that, I mean, I think that's important, that that's at least there still.
Yeah, I don't think, I'll, I'll be honest with you, we would have a problem with, as long as we maintain the plowing of Orchard Beach north of this, that we would continue to plow to the south.
Yeah, and, uh, like what you said about other maintenance, that?
Sure.
Pruning and, and tree stuff or whatever?
Yep.
That may arise, and then someone's like, well, he said, she said, kind of thing.
Sure. I, I think we can include that in any kind of agreement, uh, that we would draft up to try to make that, uh, more clear from a long-term standpoint.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Alderman Glad?
Yeah, there's a referendum coming up in the spring.
Yes.
And if it were to pass, what happens to the road district and the township?
I'm sorry, who would pass what?
If it passes, what happens to the road township?
The road district will be abolished, and the county highway, uh, department would take over the roads and all the duties of the county, of the township highway department, and, uh, charge you ninety percent less of taxes and give you fifty percent of the, uh, benefits that the road discretionary now.
But I mean, how much of a hassle are we going to have as far as?
Yeah, that's a good point, we don't know if the obligations under any agreement at all would be?
Well, I think it's, I think the statutes pretty clearly states that whatever obligations we have carry on to the county highway department.
Well, you would know, I haven't read it. I mean, very few people have read that thing.
And I think we're, uh, to be honest, if it passes, I suspect there'll be a lawsuit that'll go forward.
Right.
Because it's unconstitutional.
It's hard to predict where that's going to go, but that's a good point.
And, and that's a part of my concern, is predicting where it's going to go, I mean,
Well, even if we were to agree tonight to the proposal, you're going to go back to the county, what's, what's your timetable on, actually?
What I would like to do is go back to the county, uh, Transportation Committee, uh, have them, uh, make a, send a recommendation to the county board to participate in an IGA like I discussed. Hopefully, the county board would then agree to that, and then, um, this spring, we would complete the engineering for it, so that we go out there to, uh, bid for construction next summer.
Yeah, so the referendum's, but I don't know when that?
March of the leaves.
In the spring?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll know your answer before it gets done.
So basically, maybe we should be waiting until, until March to find out?
I was going to say, or you could make a contingent upon the county accepting that responsibility after March from a legal standpoint, but like you said, if there's a lawsuit, who knows where it's going to go? It's, it's hard to put that issue into the mix, because you don't know where it's going to go.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Do, do we have to act as if it, as things are today, though?
Today?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Alderman Santi?
Well, okay, there's no, there's no official number with the county yet, they have, they have agreed to anything?
They have not, initially, they were in favor of it, uh, talking to the committee members, um, and they were waiting for, uh, confirmation that the city would want to be involved in it also, so. But that was over a year ago, and things changed.
I know, did you submit a number to them?
They did see the original numbers, yes.
Okay.
But let me, let me take that back, I believe I gave them the original number. My memory last month isn't that great, but a year ago could be a lot worse.
All right, so where did the fifty thousand dollar number come from?
Uh, trying to split it up, uh, taking the length of the road and an estimated budget for, per mile of road, and seeing what's there, uh, the different bodies, um, knowing how much the association was willing to contribute, uh, the sources of funds that the county has compared to either the city or the township, and then trying to proportionately make it work so that everybody is palatable for everybody, so.
That's all I have, thanks. Any other questions, Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
As it stands right now, our stance is we did not annex that, that piece of property, correct?
Well, we certainly didn't annex it affirmatively, what's the position of the, of some people is that we annexed it by law when we went up to the border of the western edge of the right-of-way of that strip.
Well?
I'm putting writing that that's debated.
Right, whether it's a right-of-way or not, especially considering it's been always private, and it has been for, what, however many years, a hundred years plus, um, and I guess what I'm wondering is, is if the county wants to go forward with this, and it becomes, you know, if it's deemed that it's in the city, which means that, that parcel would wind up under our jurisdiction, which means you would have to build that road to city specs because it's in the city, so you're not talking about township, you're talking city. And it, again, if there isn't enough right-of-way there, uh, maybe the, we would look at, uh, possibly just vacating that, that parcel, uh, because we don't really have any, it doesn't, it doesn't take and, uh, service the rest. take and service the residents of the city of McHenry, so for the, for the, the city, you don't really feel that, possibly that it's needed under our streets, and therefore would be vacated. And I just kind of wonder where that would fit.
Well, I will be honest with you, we do not have funds proposed for the project that would construct it to a city standard subdivision road, a new city standard subdivision road. That is not our intent. Our intent is to make sure that we have an eighteen-foot wide road that has a solid base on it and addresses drainage issues, to make sure that we can handle it long-term, not much different than some of the older subdivisions that we have, the Cooney Heights that I grew up in, where you have ditches, the other areas throughout the town that don't necessarily have curb and gutter and sidewalk, so.
No, and I understand that, and that's not the curb and sidewalk necessarily, but we do have a lot of streets that don't have sidewalks, but it's still, how are you going to handle the drainage off of that road? I mean...
Well, we've got drainage to the river now, we've got a storm sewer to the river, actually, a couple of storm sewers that actually go to the river. So what we would do is improve the existing drainage to those points that go to the river, and make sure that we can handle the flow. There may be some bonding, but it'll be substantially improved from what it is.
But what you're talking about is, is that going to be in the agreement too, then, as far as who's going to maintain those sewers?
I guess we could put anything in the agreement, you know? As long as the city, so I would say as long as the township maintains, or has ownership and maintenance responsibilities for Orchard Beach to the north, the township would consider maintaining those storm sewers, yes.
Is that where they're?
I should take that back. Who maintains that storm sewer now?
Yeah, that's, that's...
The one, what's that?
I don't know.
I would think it would be the city, it's either the city or the association that has the easement.
Right, is that the city?
I'm sorry, part of the drainage system for Riverside Hollow, there's, there's some collection structures that are on the rear property lines that are part of the drainage system for Riverside Hollow. And there is an existing easement along the east limit of the, of the subdivision.
So currently, the city maintains that storm sewer?
I believe so, yes.
But I think, to answer your question, though, I, I don't think that we have a problem with maintaining any additional storm sewer, that we would add to the system to improve it as part of our improvements for the period of time where we continue to maintain the Orchard Beach north, you know?
And, and I understand that, but now, I don't think anybody even thought about discussing the, the sewers. Now we're discussing the sewers, what else is there in there that possibly that we haven't discussed? What else is going to pop up, you know? One thing here, one thing there type, you know? Should you take core samples of what the base is like over there?
I think we're, we're pretty familiar. We did some, a road right up the street from there came up, and we came through and pulverized, didn't stabilize it. We'll be doing the same thing here. We don't necessarily, the material that's there, we'll actually stabilize that material through the use of cement. So we'll come through, pulverize that material to a depth of about ten inches, then we'll add cement to it, repulverize it, regrade it, compact it, and that'll be solid, as solid as a gravel base, if not more.
It'll only be as solid as what's below it.
The difference is...
Is there anything below?
The difference, the difference between that is, though, the only thing that would hamper it would be if there were organic materials in there, because those would decompose. But I don't believe that road has any organic materials down through there. What we're going to find is, we're going to find a mix of gravel, original sand, things like that, and maybe even some topsoil without any organics in it. And when we pulverize that and mix that together and add the cement, that is exactly how you do in-place stabilization, reclamation, in-place reclamation is what it's actually called.
Might be good for how long?
What's that?
Which might be good for how long, as far as the...
It'll be good as long as the, the road right now, other than the surface, because it hasn't, it has no major potholes, the issues that you see on that road are not from sinking, like being on a peak bog or something like that. The issues are from drainage and standing water causing it to, to fail, or just not being paved recently. Those types of things are patched, so...
Which I know, seepage underneath the, the roads, we've seen it in some of our city streets.
Absolutely. That's why we, that's why we will take care of the drainage.
Any other questions, comments, by council? Alderman Shaffer?
Are those the two storm sewers that Jim mentioned, are they to the south?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Are the two, two storm sewers that you're talking about?
There's, there's two storm sewers. One is actually, comes out of Kennedy Homes and the Kennedy Development down to the river. The other one is further north, and it's probably just beyond your, your city limits, and that actually goes out through the IDOT right-of-way that exists, or the IDOT property, it's not necessarily right-of-way, but the property up through there. So those are the two storm sewers that we would be utilizing, that we would be tapping into to take care of any water issues there.
Thank you.
Yeah, the storm sewers we're talking about, that are for Kennedy Homes, evidently there had to be easements that were granted to put those sewers in, correct?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't...
There had to have been easements that were granted...
Granted, yes.
By the association?
It was.
Okay, which means for the road, they granted us easements in that road.
That easement was granted before the property was annexed, at which point the right-of-way would have went into the city. So if you look at it from that standpoint, the easement was granted before the annexation agreement, and they should have been granting the easement at the time. That's my understanding.
Do we have, your understanding, so we have no paperwork that show that those easements were, were granted, as far as when they were granted? Was there any compensation given for those easements?
Oh, there was compensation given for that easement, absolutely, to the association, but that was prior, from my discussions with the association president, that was completed prior to the annexation of the property, at which point they would theoretically still own that property.
So in other words, that was a private road, because they took money for...
Absolutely.
An easement.
Before the property was annexed into the city.
Right, and it's a public road that, that you jump, not, not just any road.
It's what?
I say it's a private road, not a public road.
It is a roadway.
It's a, it's not a...
And we can classify it as private or public or anything.
It's a private roadway, it's not a public roadway.
But it is a roadway.
It is not a highway, because it isn't a public roadway, because they took money for easements for those sewers, okay? It wasn't...
Yeah, I, I think we're to the point in that, that there's a legal interpretation, that we would have to go through a whole realm of legal actions to really get a definition from a court to tell us what it really is. I think we're here today to say, do we want to cooperate together and make this suitable for everybody as a joint group, or do we not want to? That's really, we've been here, I think, three times now. You've been extremely courteous to us, which we greatly appreciate, by the way, because I'm sure many of you have many other things to do rather than discuss this, so I, I want to express my appreciation for that and your patience with this. And we're really to the point where, can we come up with an agreement and work together to make this a better road, so, and try to address your concerns that you mentioned, the maintenance and things, and accomplish what we hope to accomplish, which is a road that we can easily plow, as opposed to trying to turn around right at Kennedy Development? So that's really what we're here, we're to the point where to answer those questions is a legal thing, and I don't think, we don't have any intention necessarily of going down that avenue. We just want to cooperate and work with you to get something done.
So with that said, is the majority of the council willing to let them move forward to contact the county and move this forward to see what type, type of partnership we can work with them, or where does everyone stand, so we give some direction to Jim and his team? Alderman, Benny?
I do.
Alderman Shaffer?
Move forward.
Alderman.
Yeah? Sold on.
Alderman Sancho?
I'm not comfortable with fifty thousand. I, I don't know where that's, I, I don't quite get at this negotiation going, but I would like to see more information on that, more discussion.
Alderman, Benny?
No.
Alderman, Mike?
Yes.
Mayor.
I'd like to move forward and see what kind of partnership we can come up with, and also come up with, you know, the actual dollar amounts, and see if it's going to be less than fifty thousand, so, I'll just staff and, and, you know, work with Jim Troy and, and see what this will all come down to, and I'll bring it back to council.
Sounds great. All right, thank you. And again, thank you for your patience, I mean, coming here three times and taking up your time, like you would appreciate you listening.
I appreciate you. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is discussion two thousand nineteen property tax levy. Director Lynch?
Thank you. Tonight, staff is looking for guidance on the dollar amount to levy for the two thousand nineteen property taxes in order to forward it to the next city council meeting, to, in order to establish a public hearing at that time. Some important things to remember is the property tax levy has been held flat or renewed since two thousand eleven. During that time, we would have done just the PTAL increase, it would have been approximately seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars over that time. For two thousand nineteen, if we were to do the PTAL increase, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. As many of you know, we do, we're starting our budget for two thousand nineteen, or two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and we already know some of those increases that we are going to have from salary increases, police pension, and as we all remember, police pension is one of the line items that we have to keep increasing through our property taxes, and then while we do that, the general fund actually gets less from property taxes. We did, as you all recall, we did increase our home real sales tax by a quarter percent, which we are going to be using for road programs and capital improvements, so that's going to help over the years. But right now, we would really like just to have this discussion and see where you guys would all like to go with this, with the property taxes for two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Karen. Open up for discussion by council? Alderman Shaffer?
Coming in this evening, I was in the camp to, again, keep the levy flat only because of two main things, and that was because we just, we did just increase the sales tax, and I know that's not seen by all people as a burden on our own residents, but we obviously want our residents to shop here, so it is, it is such a burden on them, and hopefully we do get to continue that competitively against our neighbors. But the other thing, too, is our water sewer rates, and what we have been discussing about that, and what could come in the future for that, is another reason for my opinion of keeping the levy flat. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Alderman, Glenn?
Yeah, to some extent, when we were first passing that, that we had talked about how, you know, we've been keeping it flat, and the only way to keep it flat would be to increase the sales tax, and we've increased the sales tax, we have increased the revenue, probably not as much as we'd like to have, and the amount of projects, there's a lot of projects out there that we'd like to do, but Mayor, you have been quite vocal of the fact that you'd like to see more residential development, and as well as seeing the new homes go up, we don't want to see more empty vacant older homes as well, and, you know, every time profit taxes go up, and I don't care, I, I realize that we're a small percentage of it, but every time somebody sees those going up, you see more people getting frustrated and looking to put up a for sale sign or whatever, I mean, I just got my assessed value this year, and they jumped me fifteen percent. You know, some people got, jumped seventeen and eighteen percent, and some people four and a half or not at all. And there's going to be some larger tax burdens for some of us property owners that, even without anybody giving an increase whatsoever through any of the taxing bodies, those people will see an increase in their property taxes. And that's why I, I'd just like to see it flat, I'd like to, unfortunately, the first time we did this, I was hoping that that was going to send a message to other taxing bodies that, you know what, the people of the city of McHenry are overburdened with property tax, and I was hoping that we would lead the way, and there have been some entities that have worked on it and others that, that kind of ignored it, so, but that doesn't mean we should just give up, and I'd like to see it flat again.
I also, I, I, and staff and, and you, Mayor, since you, you've come on board, has done a really good job of trying to educate the public. I know you do it in all of your, your speeches, and I just, I've said this multiple times over the last fourteen years, that we, the residents need to really be encouraged to go after, especially some of the educational taxing bodies, to either reduce their levy or, or hold their levies, because that truly is, Alderman Glenn said, you know, we tried to beat the stewards and, and set the pace, and it, it falls short, and it falls on us when you consider the fact that seven percent of the property tax bill or less is, is for all the services that this city provides, which includes, you know, a police department, which is not a separate taxing body, includes a parks department, which is not a separate taxing body, and residents need to know that. I mean, when they compare us to the Crystal Lakes of the world, they, they have separate taxing bodies even for some of those entities that we don't have. And, you know, when we continually hold our levy, yet our, our other taxing bodies around us go up, it, it just, it totally reflects bad on the city, who I think, again, over the last fourteen years that I've been here, has, has cut staff, has cut costs, has done a tremendously good job with what they can, and now people want more services as the economy gets better, yet, you know, it's, it's not going to come out of our budget, it's just we can't do it without raising taxes. So either we hold the line and services stay as they are, or maybe even decrease, but it's not, that burden shouldn't all be put on the city of McHenry and this taxing body.
I agree with Alderman. Alderman, Benny?
No, I agree with that, too. I mean, I know the popular answer is not to raise taxes, and we're all paying them as well, and mine went up substantially. The reality is, we can't keep things flat for a decade and expect to maintain excellent staff and fund, you know, the services that we all depend on. I feel like, don't we have a bond going that's going to be expiring? So maybe this is a good year to look at raising that, because it may not have the massive impact on the tax bill.
Two years, I thought.
In two years.
The bond doesn't affect, excuse me, sorry, property taxes here, does it? All those taxes? It's not like this whole district where they, it's on your property tax bill, we have paid the taxes and paid for them with our other revenue sources.
But still, I'm...
But it's still, yeah, more money that we will have for...
Yeah, I just don't think it's responsible to think that we can maintain a growing city and, and not increase those taxes at some point.
I agree. Alderman?
I've always been careful as a council to try to make sure that future growth doesn't affect the residents that are here, and even though we are a growing city, I don't think we want to see our residents having to pay, pay that price because we're growing, and we just need to find alternatives. I'd really like to see it stay flat. I, I look at it as a, as an Alderman, but I also look at it... I, I look at it as a, uh, as an Alderman, but I also look at it as a property tax, uh, payer that, uh, if, you know, I'm sitting out there with, with a lot of other people, uh, yeah, I'm worried about my property tax. Everybody is. Usually if you're talking, uh, city government or any kind of government, uh, taxes is always the first thing that comes up, no matter- I don't care if you're talking about from, from Washington all the way down to whatever, uh, taxes is the first thing that comes out of people's mouths.
Anyone else? Alderman Havick?
I agree with what Alderman Schaefer was saying, and, you know, we do have a lot of projects we wanna kick as a city. And I think we do have a revenue concern that we need to bring in more revenue as a city to do the projects that we wanna do. But I don't think increasing the property taxes is the way to do it, and there's other ways to do it. It'll be more significant and make a bigger impact. And so I don't want the burden of that to fall on the real estate property tax bill. So, I'm, we're keeping the levy flat.
Okay. Alderman, Devon?
I agree.
Santino?
Yeah, keep it low. And I, I, I do commend staff for what they've done over the years, but, uh, it's just, uh, property tax is just something that really, I don't, percentage is, is low, but it really does hit people. And I think it's really more of a mindset that they, uh, when they hear that, it, uh, it, uh, it actually, as you can see, you know, state and even into our counties where I think our, um, our growth is flat, but the state is going down. And many large municipalities have been going down just because they're trying to escape what's, what's been happening with property taxes over the past twenty or thirty years. But I also agree to keep it at flat.
And I also agree. I think, you know, um, I think it's important, I mean, obviously being part of, um, the commercial businesses and residential homes. I mean, it's, it's killing a lot of people, um, even for small businesses and so forth. So, I think it's important to keep a levy, uh, a, a flat, uh, levy, but also, uh, understand that we are gonna have to look at other revenue sources. And obviously, uh, the chair of, um, finance, you know, Alderman Havick, um, and I have had these conversations that we're really gonna have to look at what other ways we can do to bring in some revenues to, um, provide better services, provide better roads and so forth. So, um, yeah, so staff, it's obviously a good direction there.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Mayor, if I could, just quickly, that was the major topic of the, uh, council strategic planning session that we've had, is revenue sources and maximizing the revenue sources that we already have, or identifying other ones. I just wanted to let council know that, you know, uh, we heard that as the staff, and so as we move into the CIP budget, uh, period, the timing worked out perfect then when we had that session to now, because we're, we went through our own internal director level, uh, strategic planning also. And, uh, and we, we took that, uh, that direction seriously from council. And so we're really working hard as staff, directors, and really department-wide in each department to identify opportunities for better efficiencies, cost savings, uh, you know, maximizing the revenues that we have already, and identifying other sources that don't have the same impact, um, you know, as property taxes. So I just wanted to, you know, highlight that for council, that we're not just saying, oh, you know, do this or nothing, that, that we're, we understand that, staff. We understand the impact of the property taxes, and we're working hard to be able to bring forward to council some alternatives as part of the budget process that, 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 that you'll be able to consider at that time.
Alderman Schaefer?
The, the sales tax increase that, I think it was in, in here, but that, the, we've only had one month so far-
Yeah.
Cause it started June first, so you, July first? Do you, do you get those figures then? Do you see that immediately? Do you, do you know thirty days after months end?
No.
No?
Not until they release it.
Okay.
Three months?
Two, three, three months for a sales tax, yes.
Yeah, it's online, takes them to reduce.
Oh, really? So, basically, we only have one month so far, right?
Right, we had October and through July.
Okay. That would be something to, uh, that I know I would, probably the other council members would too, just like to keep a, an eyeball on that. See what those numbers are coming in at, uh, the, the growth number.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Hey, council, uh, staff reports? Anything? Um, I have nothing, uh, this evening. City council comments?
We were talking about, uh, the taxing bodies and everything else. I don't know, maybe kick around the idea of, uh, having a joint, uh, open meeting, uh, of the taxing bodies or, or what? You know, every year we talk about the flat tax, and we talk about how some of the other taxing bodies are the ones that are impacting our, our, our residents' property taxes. And, um, it should be nice if there was something more that we could do to influence them, you know, as far as really, uh, you know, let's face it, every time a resident has a problem with, with their property tax, the first thing they think about is calling the city and complaining. You know, and, uh, we're the ones that take the hit all the time, even though we're the ones that are one of the least impactful to their, for their property taxes. And, uh, it would just be nice somehow, uh, that we need all the taxing bodies to work together in order to make this a better city and, uh, and help us grow and help us maintain everything. You know, so that we have a good balanced community. So I don't know, everybody needs to put their thinking caps on that, I don't know. I don't know if there's a solution or not, but it should be nice if we could come up with something.
We have public meetings, we need time as well, so.
Well, but, we're not gonna go there as, as representatives of the city, you know, and, and break things up, so. That's a fair argument.
I have a question for Director Martin. Do we, have you gotten an update on, uh, all the taxing bodies, uh, in or out for the Jessup manufacturing thing? Do we know that? Did I miss that, or?
Yes.
Did that, did they all agree to it?
No, um, District fifteen did, I have been, uh, the, um, McHenry, uh, 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 yeah. Uh, according to the, uh, article, it's going back to progress somewhat, uh, by, you know, you have, uh, it's, it's what they, it's, it's public, uh, it's right, you know, but I don't, uh, move all the projects, it's, it's, it's family, all the projects. But so, so they were, they were, it is a big question, uh, uh, right? They should, you know, uh, uh, probably, uh, probably, uh, property tax, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, uh.